Always, all three.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this Berkeley County Board of Education meeting this Monday, June 16, 2025. I declare a quorum of members is present. I call this meeting to order and declare that the media has been notified according to the Freedom of Information Act. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make your motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting on June 2, 2025.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting on June 2, 2025.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make your motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Are there any changes, additions, or comments about the board meeting minutes on June the 2nd? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 9-0, we are in executive session.
Respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make the motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. The stated purpose of executive session is the discussion of employment contracts and/or an appointment of administrator or administrators as needed, discussion and consideration of proposed amendment to employment agreement between Berkeley County School District and Dr. Anthony Dixon pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A one dash two, receipt of legal advice regarding and discussion of acquisition of property for a future school along Highway fifty two corridor, receipt of legal advice regarding potential revisions to the board policy B A. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Nine zero, we are in executive session.
I'll now entertain a motion to return to regular session.
Make the motion.
Second?
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Davenport, to return to regular session. I'd like to state for the record that no action was taken in executive session. All in favor of returning to regular session, please respond by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Please now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to difference makers and special recognitions. If the board would step down to the front. Dr. Whitley?
Good evening Chair Wofford, members of the board, Dr. Whitley and everyone who's joined us here this evening. Tonight, we are celebrating our students who were selected as South Carolina Teaching Fellows and our sole Gates Scholar recipient. First up are our Teaching Fellows. Berkeley County School District had 12 students plus one who was named an alternate who were accepted into the Teaching Fellows program to pursue the education track after graduation. A total of 11 plan to pursue a degree in education. Teaching Fellow recipients can receive up to $24,000 in fellowship funds, $6,000 a year for four years while they complete a degree leading to initial teacher certification. Recipients must also agree to teach in South Carolina public school every year they receive the scholarship. We are so proud of these students for choosing a career in public education and for choosing to make a positive difference for the next generation of students. And since these students are often teacher cadets, we invited their teacher cadet instructor to be here with them tonight. And on behalf of our HR team and our academics team, they will also receive a Berkeley Bayonne t-shirt tonight and a book for instructional practices. And our Berkeley Bayonne t-shirt is because we're going to be welcoming y'all back as soon as you finish your degree at a new teacher orientation. All right, so first up, we have Berkeley High School, Alyssa Archer, Anderson University. Emily Moon, the University of South Carolina. Carson Steele, Charleston Southern University. Jadeel John Wharton, Wentworth University. And their teacher cadet instructor, Ms. Jackie Klein. And from Kane Bay High, we have Ashley Kelly, College of Charleston. Madison Maine, Wentworth University. Tarek Henderson, Charleston Southern University. Jacob Hurd, Charleston Southern University. Bradley Kubitz, alternate Wentworth University. And their teacher cadet instructor, Ms. Rose Carroll. From Phillips Simmons High School, we have Emma Hoppsire, College of Charleston. And Amelia Lyden. Amelia received Teaching Fellows for the College of Charleston, but she will actually pursue her degree in early childhood at Clemson University. And the teacher cadet instructor.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, please.
I'll now entertain a motion to return to regular session.
Make the motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Davenport, to return to regular session. I'd like to state for the record that no action was taken in executive session. All in favor of returning to regular session, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Please now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to difference makers and special recognitions. If the board would step down to the front. Dr. Whitley.
Good evening, Chair Wofford, members of the board, Dr. Whitley, and everyone who's joined us here this evening. Tonight, we are celebrating our students who were selected as South Carolina Teaching Fellows and our sole Gates Scholar recipient. First up are our Teaching Fellows. Berkeley County School District had 12 students, plus one who was named an alternate, who were accepted into the Teaching Fellows Program to pursue the education track after graduation. A total of 11 plan to pursue a degree in education. Teaching Fellow recipients can receive up to $24,000 in fellowship funds, $6,000 a year for four years, while they complete a degree leading to initial teacher certification. Recipients must also agree to teach in South Carolina public school every year they receive the scholarship. We are so proud of these students for choosing a career in public education and for choosing to make a positive difference for the next generation of students. And since these students are often teacher cadets, we invited their teacher cadet instructor to be here with them tonight. And on behalf of our HR team and our academics team, they will also receive a Berkeley Bayonne T-shirt tonight and a book for instructional practices. And our Berkeley Bayonne T-shirt is because we're going to be welcoming y'all back as soon as you finish your degree at a new teacher orientation. All right, so first up, we have Berkeley High School, Alyssa Archer, Anderson University. Emily Moon, the University of South Carolina. Carson Steele, Charleston Southern University. Jadeel John Wharton, Winthrop University. And their teacher cadet instructor, Ms. Jackie Klein. And from Kane Bay High, we have Ashley Kelly, College of Charleston. Madison Main, Winthrop University. Terrick Henderson, Charleston Southern University. Jacob Hurd, Charleston Southern University. Bradley Kubitz, alternate, Winthrop University. And their teacher cadet instructor, Ms. Rose Carroll. From Philip Simmons High School, we have Emma Hoppsire, College of Charleston. And Amelia Lyden. Amelia received Teaching Fellows for the College of Charleston, but she will actually pursue her degree in early childhood at Clemson University. And the teacher cadet instructor is Taylor South. And from Stratford High School, Jasmine Cooper, Charleston Southern University. Avery Hayesley, University of South Carolina. And teacher cadet instructors, Marlee McNamie and Tracy Fowler. All right, so that is a large group. If y'all want to make y'all's way back up, and we will get a large picture. You can get him down, or he needs to be able to go up. All right. And thank you all so much. We'll see you in about three to four years at New Teacher Orientation. All right, and next up, I'll let them go through. We have Mr. Carmelo Jones from Cross High. Carmelo was the only BCSD student to receive... Yep, go ahead, cheer for him. Carmelo was our only BCSD student to receive the highly coveted Gates Scholarship this year. The Gates Scholarship is one of the most generous, merit-based, and minority scholarships out there. This year, there were more than 48,000 applicants from across the nation, and Jones is one out of only 750 students selected. The Gates Scholarship covers the full cost of attendance at any accredited United States college or university. This includes tuition, fees, room and board, transportation, books, and other personal costs. Carmelo is a very familiar face in the Cross community. He is a football star and was Cross High School's class of 2025 salutatorian. He has made us and his community very proud, and we believe he may be the first student... And based on the information we have, we believe he is the first student in the history of Cross High to receive this prestigious scholarship. And Carmelo, we wish you the very best of luck at the University of South Carolina in the fall. Go Gamecocks.
Carmelo, thank you for not wasting all that.
And with all that excitement, this concludes this evening's Difference Maker recognition.
Congratulations to all of our special recognitions, especially Mr. Jones. What an amazing accomplishment. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 5A, Citizen Comments. There was no one who signed up for Citizen Comments tonight. Dr. Dixon is on the phone, but he is out of town at a conference. So Dr. Whitley will be giving the superintendent's report. Dr. Whitley, you're recognized.
Thank you. This past week, we hosted Part One of our annual summer leadership. We brought together school leadership teams to collaboratively chart a course for continued student growth, achievement, and wraparound student support. On Thursday, our leadership teams were joined by classroom teachers and instructional coaches, ensuring that those closest to the classroom had a seat and a voice at every school leadership table. Participants engaged in high-level professional development focused on using data to drive decisions and improve student outcomes. Data-driven instruction will be paramount in our quest to accelerate student learning. As you know, we also recently announced several school leadership updates across the district. Dr. Dixon shared with these leaders on Tuesday that he was excited about the skills, talents, and commitments they bring to their new roles and teams, and we are confident that they will foster excellence in their schools and bloom where they've been planted. Dr. Dixon has shared often that his own journey in education has been shaped by growth and change. He began as a special education teacher for students with learning disabilities at St. Stevens Elementary and for students with emotional disabilities at Memminger Elementary. And over the years, he has served on leadership teams at Memminger, Sanders Clyde, Boulder Bluff Elementary, Daniel Island School, Kane Hoy Elementary, Philip Simmons Middle, and Philip Simmons High before transitioning to district leadership and academics and school services. Each role has taught him invaluable lessons that he carries with him daily in his role as superintendent. As we serve more than 39,000 students across the district, it's essential that our leaders embrace change, come to know our schools across the district well, and lead with student-focused intention to ensure that every student receives the support they need to thrive. On June 13th, our BCSD Fine Arts students gave a fantastic final performance at the Summer Step 2025 Finale. This special event, held for family and friends, showcased the incredible talent of students who participated in our special talent enrichment program, STEP. We also recently celebrated the careers of 88 dedicated retirees during a reception at Cypress Gardens. These individuals, representing decades of service, have shaped the lives of countless students and helped build the strong foundation we continue to grow upon. In addition to our educators, we extend our deepest appreciation to the many staff who contribute daily to public education, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance, technology, food service workers, clerical staff, pair professionals, nurses, and other support professionals. Each person plays a critical role in creating effective learning environments for our students. Finally, in the upcoming board meetings, we will provide in-depth updates on the work accomplished over the past three years, as well as our priorities for the year ahead. You are here from multiple departments as we share progress, impact, and next steps aligned to our district's goals. Our district goal for the year is accelerating learning outcomes for all. We are excited about the directions we are going in, aligning our work to schools' identified needs to advance student outcomes. Thank you for your continued support as we work together to serve every student every day.
Thank you so much, Dr. Whitley. We'll now move on to executive session items. Start with Mr. McQuillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to accept the personnel recommendations of the administration as discussed in the executive session for the current school year.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. McQuillan, a second by Ms. Davenport. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Latonya Brown as the SPED Compliance Coordinator with a contract beginning date to be determined.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Davenport, a second by Ms. Littleton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Congratulations to Ms. Brown. She is coming from out of state and is relocating, so she's not here tonight. But she is moving to South Carolina, and we are very excited. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve Dr. Dixon to enter into due diligence in the acquisition of property for future school along Highway 52 corridor.
Second.
As discussed in executive session.
As discussed in executive session. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Baker, a second by Mr. Ramsey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. I move to approve the First Amendment of the Employment Agreement between Dr. Anthony Dixon and the Berkeley County School District as presented in executive session and authorize the board chair to execute it on behalf of the board.
Second.
There's a motion by Wofford, a second by Littleton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 8A, Temporary Committee Assignments. No assignments are needed tonight because we have a full board. We will now recess for committee meetings, and we'll start with Academics and Innovation. Ms. Littleton, you're recognized.
I'm calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Approve three to zero. The only item on the agenda is the corrective action plan extension request for Head Start. Dr. Gilman, you are recognized.
Good evening, Chair Littleton, Deputy Superintendent Whitley, Board Chair Wofford, Board members, and community members. We are requesting that the Committee of Academics and Innovation approve extending the corrective action deadline by 60 days to ensure that the corrective actions are implemented thoroughly and with the intended impact for our Head Start students. As you are aware, summer break means that no Head Start students are present in school at this time. The absence of students significantly limits our ability to carry out many of the plan's required activities and interventions effectively. By extending the deadline by 60 days, we will have adequate time to fully engage with students, parents, and staff once the school year resumes. This will ensure that the corrective actions are implemented thoroughly and with the intended impact.
Any questions?
So we won't start again until August with that. That would take us into the August 13th start date for them as well?
Yes, ma'am. We would finish up in September.
September?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the corrective action plan extension request for Head Start as presented.
Second.
Madam Chair. May I ask a question?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So the body that did the audit is okay with the 60-day extension?
Yes, ma'am. The Office of Head Start is the one that suggested that we do this in order to get the information that we needed for our students.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, thank you very much, Dr. Gilman.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes three to zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes three to zero.
I'm calling the Committee on Capital Planning to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It's approved, three to zero. Only agenda item is RFQ 732-24-25, Construction Manager at Risk Services. For Goose Creek High School Classroom Edition, Mr. Buck Hemstrout, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, Committee Chair Baker, Board Chair Wofford, Deputy Superintendent Whitley, and Board members. Tonight, I'm going to ask Ms. Robyn McNeil to present this as she was the procurement officer over this RFQ solicitation.
Thank you. Greetings, committee members, board members, and deputy superintendent. This evening, we present for review and approval RFQ 732-24-25 for Construction Manager at Risk Services related to Goose Creek High School Classroom Edition project. The solicitation and award process followed the district's procurement procedures. A total of seven proposals were received and thoroughly reviewed. The top three firms were selected for interviews. After the interview process, the award was granted to the highest-ranked proposal. Proposal, HG Reynolds Company. The company submitted a cost proposal of $75,000 for pre-construction services. Key duties in the pre-construction services include planning and design, cost estimation, scheduling permitting, valued engineering, risk management, subcontractor selection, site analysis, construction management, and design development, to name a few. Once the design phase is completed, the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, will be presented to the board for review.
Anybody have any questions? Will we do the motion? I make a motion to approve the award for Request for Qualifications 732-24-25, Construction Manager at Risk Services for Goose Creek High School Classroom's addition to HG Reynolds Company for the pre-construction services total of $75,000 effective June 19th, 2025, contingent upon the expiration of the protest period.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion's approved. Voted three to zero. Thank you, Buck, and thank you, Ms. Robyn. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting and return to regular session.
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion's approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next on the agenda are the reports from the standing committees. First, a report from the Committee on Academics and Innovation, Chair Kathy Littleton.
Madam Chair, the Committee on Academics and Innovation met on June 2nd, 2025. And on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for April 2025, Head Start Credit Report for April 2025, and revise BCSD Head Start Calendar.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the updated 2025-2026 Local Board Approved Courses as Provided.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee from earlier this evening, I move to approve the corrective action extension request for Head Start.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Next is the Committee on Finance and Human Resources. Chairman Michael Ramsey, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, when the Committee on Finance and Human Resources met on June 2nd, 2025, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve out-of-state travel as presented. GCCA, to allow for deductions to exempt employees' salary for partial day absences in certain circumstances permitted by the Fair Labor Standards Act under 29 CFRS 541.710, as presented by administration.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the community eligibility program as presented to hold on the eight schools.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the school district in the principal amount not to exceed $118 million for the purposes of repayment of existing debt, funding capital projects, and funding other initiatives of the school district, and paying the cost of issuance of the bonds.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. I would like to state for the record that Mr. McQuillan has entered his recusal in writing prior to the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, eight zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to amend a proposed revised policy, GCCA, to allow for deductions to exempt employees' salary for partial day absences in certain circumstances permitted by the Fair Labor Standards Act under 29 CFRS 541.710, as presented by administration.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve second reading of policy, GCCA, vacation leave and holidays as presented by administration.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to amend proposed revised policy, GCCA-A, by striking the phrase "Once they have exhausted their vacation leave," or "If they are not entitled to vacation leave," in the first sentence of the proposed Personal Leave section as presented by administration.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the second reading of policy, GCCA-E, other leave as presented by administration.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my report.
Yes, ma'am. Can we clarify that all of these were in fact second reading?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just for the record, that all of these have now passed second reading. Only two had second reading in their motions.
In the motion, yes. These are all second readings. GCCA, GCCA-A, GCCA-E were all second readings. Thank you. Next is the Committee on Capital Planning. Chairman Joe Baker, you are recognized.
Madam Chairwoman, the Committee on Capital Planning met on June 2, 2025, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the award of Request for Qualifications 726-24-25 for A&E Services for indefinite quantity contract to FW Architects, Mosley Architects, Caplia Co. Architects, Hole Building Systems, DWG Consulting Engineers, and Macmillan-Paston Smith, architecture with a single project limit up to $100,000 or an indefinite delivery contract not to exceed $300,000 over a two-year term as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Also on recommendation of the committee from earlier this evening, I move to approve the award of RFQ 732-24-25 CM at Risk Services for Goose Creek High School Classroom Edition to HG Reynolds Company for the pre-construction services total of $75,000 effective June 19, 2025, contingent upon the expiration of the protest period.
We have a recommendation from committee. No second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my report.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. McQuillan, a second by Ms. Davenport to adjourn. I would like to say in the comments, as we are adjourning now, there will be a public budget hearing upcoming on... June 23rd, next Monday. And I didn't have that written down, so I apologize. Any further discussion on the adjournment? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. We are adjourned.